All right, folks, we'll go ahead and come to order. Welcome to the November 2019 meeting, Oldham County Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Greg King. Excuse me, Greg King. I'll be acting as your chair today in the absence of Chairman Jeffries. Mr. Jeffries is under the weather, so you're stuck with me. Sorry about your luck. Before we get started, I'd like for everyone to first check your cell phones, set them to silent, something, so that they don't disrupt the hearing, and then join me in the recitation of the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, guys. We'll start with the minutes.
Yes, sir.
All right, everyone get a copy of the minutes. If you have, I would entertain a motion to approve, and then we'll discuss any changes, edits. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Questions, edits, changes. All right, we'll move into a voice vote for approval of the minutes. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, so we'll move into the first docket on the item. Ms. Nunn, will you read the first docket?
Yes.
Do I need to swear staff?
Oh, yes, swear staff in.
Mm-hmm.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Do.
First docket, PZ-19-22. Application has been filed by the City of LaGrange for the approval of a zoning map amendment on properties located at 301 East Main Street through 423 East Main Street, LaGrange. The change is from R2A residential district to CN, commercial neighborhood district.
All right. Good morning. Amy Alvey with Oldham County Planning and Development Services. As Ms. Nunn...
I...
Oh.
Ms. Smith?
I need the commission to know that I am an employee of the City of LaGrange, and I don't know what your pleasure is about whether or not I hear this case.
Does anyone on the commission perceive a conflict with Ms. Smith's continued participation in this docket?
I don't. Does she have any voting issues or anything on this for the City of LaGrange in this, just besides being an employee?
She will not vote at the City of LaGrange when it goes to them.
I don't see a conflict.
Fair enough. Counselor, do we need to take any action on that or move forward? All right, you're staying with us.
Thank you.
All right, Amy?
Sure. Again, this is docket PZ 19022. As Ms. Nunn stated, this is an application that has been filed by the City of LaGrange for the approval of a zoning map amendment on properties located at 301 East Main Street through 423 East Main Street in LaGrange. They are proposing to change the zoning from R2A residential to CN, commercial neighborhood. The entire area of the 14 tracks combined is approximately three acres. This is an aerial view of the properties. Again, this is Cedar Street here, and it goes one property past. We still had it, have it as Mulberry Avenue, but the street sign says Edimundo Way, so we'll get that updated in our mapping. But this is an aerial view of the properties, outlined in red. This is an area view. It just shows the existing structures and drives. This is the zoning. So again, everything listed here is zoned R2A residential. It's kind of hard to see in some of the picture here, but the darker brown is R4 residential. Across the street, it's zoned I1, heavy industrial, and that, you'll see that was similar back when the zoning maps were created. They anticipated the use along the railroad tracks to be that of industrial. This is the location of the property that's owned by the county of the train museum. This is the future land use map. Just shows the anticipated future use of the property is single-family city. There's been no previous actions before the planning commission. So a little bit of the case history, there was a community meeting that was held by the City of LaGrange on September 30th, 2019. Adjoining property owner notices were mailed out November 7th. The properties were posted. There was a sign at the first one and the last one that were posted, so there were two sign postings. That was posted on November the 12th. And the neighborhood meeting was on November the 13th, and the public notice appeared in the Oldham era on November the 14th. So again, this is a legislative body-initiated zone change for the 14 tracks. Again, this is them outlined in red. Per KRS 10211-2, a proposal for a zoning map amendment may originate with the planning commission of the unit, which any fiscal quarter legislative body which is a member of the unit or with any owner of the property in question. The proposed amendment shall be referred to the planning commission before adoption, and the planning commission shall, item one, hold at least one public hearing after notice as required by this chapter, and make findings of fact and recommendation of approval or disapproval of the proposed map amendment to the various legislative bodies or fiscal court. And then item two is make findings of fact and a recommendation of approval or disapproval of the proposed map amendment to the various legislative bodies or fiscal courts involved. So this is the statute that allows the legislative bodies to initiate zoning changes. So a meeting was hosted by the City of LaGrange on September 30th, 2019, at the LaGrange Train Museum. Staff was present, and this was with the property owners of the subject parcels. At the meeting, nine of the 14 property owners were present and were all in favor of moving forward with the zoning map amendment. So this is, again, is the aerial of the properties outlined in red. The ones that are highlighted green were the ones that were present and were in favor of supporting the zoning change to CN, commercial neighborhood. On November 4th of 2019, LaGrange City Council passed a resolution, number three, series 2019, authorizing the mayor or his designee to make application for a zoning map amendment. All council members present voted in favor of the resolution, so the City of LaGrange, or City Council, is in favor of moving it forward. Then, in our zoning regulations, it says per section 38010, ZMA procedures and development plan requirements, item B exemptions, it states that applications for amendments to the zoning map which are initiated by the commission or legislative body having zoning authority over the affected property shall be exempt from the development plan and binding element section of the ordinance. Normally, when you see a zoning map amendment, you see some type of development plan, whether it be residential or commercial. So this is the section that exempts the legislative body or the commission that initiates a zoning change to be exempt from providing a development plan for the property that's in the subject of being changed. By changing the zoning from R2A to CN, it would allow uses such as business and professional offices, commercial uses under 10,000 square feet, restaurants without drive-throughs, and bed and breakfast establishments by right. So by changing it from R2A to CN, it would allow people that currently reside in the homes, they could either have home occupation where they actually get clients that come to their home, which they can at this point, which would qualify for the professional offices, or they could use it for commercial uses as well. So this is just a comparison of the permitted uses in R2A versus the permitted uses in CN. Everything, if you just look at the far right column, everything that is in blue, that are, those are the same things that are allowed in the R2A district, so they would be allowed to do the items in white. So as permitted uses, they would get to go and be able to do farmers' markets, restaurants without drive-throughs, again, retail and personal service establishments under 10,000 square feet, libraries, museums, art galleries, parks, business and professional offices, and they can also do two-family and multifamily as well. So again, those are things that by the zoning change, they would be allowed to do by right. So this is conditional uses. So this would require a visit to the LaGrange Board of Adjustments if they wanted to do something that is in this right-hand column. So again, the items in, in blue are the things that are allowed, that were allowed today as, or would be allowed through a conditional use permit process. So the things in white are, is what they would be allowed to do by new, going to the CN. So they would have to get a conditional use permit for a veterinarian hospital or kennel, community facility, community buildings and facilities, manufactured homes, and sewage treatment plants. According to the applicant's justification statement, the purpose of the zoning map amendment is to encourage economic vitality in an area by mix of residential and business uses, recognizing the importance of the train museum as a tourism attraction and venue for public events. And then the applicant wrote a rather lengthy justification statement for further compliance to the comprehensive plan, and that was included in your staff report, so you can always refer back to that as well. So this is looking at East Main Street, also known as Jericho Road, also known as Kentucky 712. So this is just a view, this is what we'll say, going this way, going towards Jericho Road, and it stops right where that red arrow is. That is Mulberry Avenue or Edimundo Way. This is looking west. This is looking back into town, again, where the red arrow is. That's the approximate location of the beginning of the zoning change. Then, starting at the corner of Cedar and Main Street, this is the first house. This is 301 East Main, 305 East Main, 307 East Main, 311 East Main, 313, 401, 403, 405, 413, 415, 417, 419, 421, and then the final one, 423. So in summary, the City of LaGrange is requesting an approval of a zoning map amendment on approximately 14 tracks of land, which is approximately three acres, from R2A residential to CN, commercial neighborhood, and this, your action today would be either a recommendation of approval or denial to the City of LaGrange. That is all that I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Alvey. All right, move into presentation from the applicant. Mayor Black. Afraid we're gonna need to get you sworn in, sir.
Yes, sir.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, ma'am.
Name and address for the record.
John W. Black, 108 North Fifth Street, LaGrange, Kentucky.
Mayor, please proceed.
I want to thank everyone for allowing myself to represent the City of LaGrange here today on this matter before the commission. I think Amy's done such an excellent job. Is there any questions further, and I'll answer them, or else I'll sit down. But she's done an excellent job, I think, in explaining what's been taking place here for the last number of months. As far as Ms. Smith goes, you all didn't object to her voting on this matter, but if she does vote no, I'll take that up with her later, you know? So I've got areas to deal with those kind of things, you know? But anyway, Mary Ann, I think, is very understanding of the project before the, before the commission, and basically, all it is is a economic vitality effort for the city to, once again, extend our Main Street corridor to the east, taking in 14 proposed properties. We're already expanding to the west with our nine-acre Soul Springs Park project, where we're gonna have to the west of our city downtown, we're gonna have a splash pad, a amphitheater, a skateboard facility, a welcome center, and things of that type. So we're trying to extend the corridor of our Main Street to go east and west. As Amy has said, we've had numerous meetings with the public, tried to get their input. We had one to begin with at the train railroad dining car a number of months ago, and she said nine out of 14 folks showed up there, and they were all in approval of the suggestion. And then, as required by the Planning and Zoning Commission, we did have a public meeting, I think, on, on November 13th, where we sent out, sent out 139 letters, and we had 10 respondents come to the meeting. And of those 10, they just did have some basic questions. I'll give you some of the questions or the concerns that they had. They weren't anything that we could not, I think, actually deal with, but we did try to answer their questions, if I can find those for you, if they're in their packet. I assume, do y'all have those questions in your packet of what their concerns were? If not, I think I have them here somewhere. I wanted to at least let you know. Oh, the neighbors expressed similar general concerns as were raised at the first meeting, which were all satisfactorily addressed, namely, how is this going to change our plans to live here? The answer to that, not at all, but if you want to operate a business out of your home, you can if you meet the stiffer occupational standards. I don't know if the word occupational is correct, but Jim Urban has reiterated numerous times to these folks, if in fact, your property is changed to a zoning use, as far as commercial use, then you're gonna have to meet all the building codes, all the standards of the building code, and you're just not gonna move into a house and now say you have a cafe or restaurant there. So they understand that, and they're very well, that if in fact, they're gonna use these house other than residentially, that will be one of the requirements to meet with planning and zoning staff and get that permission to do business there. What kind of business can I have in my house? The attached comparison chart for R2 versus CN was handed out and discussed in detail. Will I still need a home occupation permit? There's one lady that works there in this area right now. She does signage work. She's a sign printer, and under this condition right now, she's not allowed to have a sign in her front yard to advertise her business, but in the event this is done here today, it would give her that permission, I believe, to do that. You, you are permitted to use your property for the certain businesses, but you have more rights, such as signs, more employees, more parking, with stiffer safety standards. I don't like that word, stiffer, but my $1,000 an hour attorney put that word in there for me, a stiffer. We're just trying to work with these folks to try to make sure that they meet all the regulations, all the setbacks, all the different things that go with appropriate growth in zoning. Will my property values go up, so I'll pay more taxes. PVA will not go up automatically, but more than likely, your property value will increase, we hope, I would hope that, as a city mayor, as you may be paying more taxes, but the rate will remain the same. Well, that's, that's not actually true either. The rate could change, but evidently, that was what put it, was put in the answer. What about the crossings and pedestrian safety? The city will promote walking and pedestrian safety, better street lighting, signage, and safer crossings. In our petitions, we have petitioned the state of Kentucky to see perhaps if we could take over that section of highway at the railroad crossing to a certain point. However, at this point, the state highway transportation cabinet has requested that we break that, that road maintenance takeover at Jericho Road at the 712 intersection, it's down by Lesko, and at this time, we're not really willing to agree to do that because we've looked at the cost of just repaving that one section of area that the state's asking us to maybe commit to take over, and be about $65,000, and we're not ready yet to do that. I will tell the commission that recently, CSX has put up a stop sign at the railroad crossing there that they've had to do by the end of this year, December 31st. All public crossings will have to have a pub, a stop sign advising the public that you have to stop these railroad crossings. That's a new federal railroad administration rule. It goes into effect by December the 31st of this year, and all railroad crossings that are publicly, on a public thoroughfare, will have stop signs, just not to cross bucks. They gotta have stop signs. So what we plan to do in that area is try to make a safe pathway at that stop sign, going from the south side of Jericho Road to the north side, and then we will construct a sidewalk up the triangle to the museum itself, where people will have a safe way to cross back and forth the street there. Our goal is, once again, to have control of this area, to try to go in and improve the sidewalks, might probably do a lighting package down that way, try to bring more traffic to the museum, the train idea we have going on the east part of LaGrange, try to create some shops, some cafes, some bookstores, things like that, for extension of Main Street. Honestly, that, that's basically the crux of the matter. It's something that we've tried to make sure our public's aware of it. They've been advised what we'd like to do. If you've ever been to the area of St. Matthews, where Chinnwood Lane comes into St. Matthews over to Brownsboro Road, that's probably something that was done there, initiated years ago. If you've ever been on Chinnwood Lane, coming out of St. Matthews over to Brownsboro, all those have come into different type of unique shops there, and I think have been done very nicely, probably with the permission of metro government planning and zoning, to make sure that goes in a orderly and proper growth manner. I think my attorney, who's not here this morning, Beach Craig Mile, he, he had a more lucrative contract than showing up here with me, so I'm here today to present our case. We do have, he did write for me some LU requirements, you know, the goals and objectives. If, maybe, if you all need those in my closing statement, I would be glad to prepare those and give those to you, as he has cited those. Otherwise, if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them now.
All right, we'll get to questions here in just a few.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of this application? All right, if no one wants to speak in favor, then we'll move on to the next segment. Is there anyone who has opposition testimony to provide in connection with this application? All right, we can move into questions of the applicant. Does anyone on the commission have questions for the mayor? Mr. Finney.
Mr. Mayor. Are all the, it appeared to be in the pictures, but are all the properties now privately owned?
They're, they're privately owned by individuals plus investors. We do have a few investors there that, that own some and are renting them out. We do have those types.
Okay. Does the city have plans for purchasing any of this property?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? All right, so we'll dispense with some of this, as we have no opposition testimony. We'll move straight into, Mayor, do you have a final statement you'd like to offer? Might be a good time to offer the goals and objectives you've referenced.
My attorney has showed up, so I'm only gonna owe him for five minutes.
That's not enough time.
My name is Rudolph Giuliani, and, oh, sorry, Beach Craig Mile, and I'm a county attorney. Not knowing what the mayor said, I do have something to add to you. I do have a summary of the neighborhood meeting. We had a neighborhood meeting on November 13th.
Beach, the mayor did present that.
He did present.
Mm-hmm. He did good.
He did.
He suggested you might have some goals and objective references out of the comprehensive plan in support of your application.
All right. Well, the goals and objectives that I thought were applicable were pretty much in my justification statement, is that LU1 logically provides for planned orderly growth, whereas we believe that the east end of Main Street is becoming a tourism destination and needs safer pedestrian controls and traffic. LU2 encourages the preservation, development of a range of housing opportunities, so we see the possibility of C-N, allowing for a little bit higher density housing, you can have multifamily units in there as well as apartments possibly, but what we foresee is that there won't be any demolition, because this area is in the historic district, and historic district would have a double check over the destruction of properties or the modification of properties. And then, if, if anyone turns one of these homes into a commercial activity, they have substantially higher occupancy standards for fire exits, signs, and safety, and access for handicapped. LU2-3 supports a diverse housing and neighborhood affordability, so we want, we want to maintain the neighborhood affordability as well as allow for a variety of housing opportunities there, including multifamily dwelling units. 3-2, LU3-2 focuses on new commercial and workplace development that's compatible with, with the potential, and considering the scale and character of the neighborhood, such as permitting cafes, storefronts, apartments, home occupations, and the like, without the limitations that a home occupation permit has, which is basically only family members can be employed, one car, no signs. In this case, if it's a C-N, a person could have a sign compatible with the sign standards within the city, but the signs are otherwise prohibited with a home occupation permit. T1 talks about transportation. This, this, having just an extension of Main Street down on the east end of town would, is about one of the few areas we could expand Main Street, I mean, go east or west, but we're gonna try to start off with the east, thinking it's more of a destination type with the train museum there, and we encourage walking and biking to the east end of town, and a continuation of the development character that sort of begun in the, the current east end of Main Street with a couple of restaurants and bicycle shops and the, the LaGrange Tourism Commission is there. And objective T-7 utilizes traffic calming techniques, and we're talking about putting a better, a new crosswalk there for safety purposes, and keep the side, keep the sidewalk on the, on the north side of Main Street, so people that want to go to the train museum can stay on that side of Main Street without having to cross it, then go about a half a block, and then cross it again. We're, I hope to try to sidewalk there. And, and then, T-23 encourages opportunity for travel to work for mobility purposes, so having it close in, place to work, without having to use cars to go everywhere is one of the other goals. And then, B-1 connotes a business development compatible with the Main Street program and the City Tourism Commission, which we just enabled a, a city tourism tax in the program to try to attract business, I mean, this tourist activity and convention business into LaGrange. And so, most of these issues came up. John went over the, the summary of the, of the neighborhood meetings. We had two of them. Did you tell them about both of them? Okay. So that's my presentation.
You might want to put in the record that there was a resolution by city council.
Oh, yes, yes. This all started off with a resolution from the city council after the first neighborhood meeting. Is the resolution in the packet?
It is.
Okay. So the whole city council has voted on this unanimously, and we passed that resolution that the city government would, would like to pursue this, and we would greatly appreciate your all's recommendation in, in favor of the zoning amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Craig Mile. Any questions for Mr. Craig Mile? All right, do you have any final statement to offer?
Not other than that.
Okay. Mr. Urban.
This is only a recommendation for a zoning map amendment to the legislative body, which is LaGrange City Council. You can either recommend approval or denial. It's on page three in your packet, as always. Because it's a zoning map amendment, there are no binding elements, and you can rely on, if you care to, the justification statement that the applicant submitted. the justification statement that the applicant submitted.
Mr. Carter, anything to add?
No.
All right, Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Haffling.
Yes, I move that docket number PG-1922 for the zoning map amendment from R2A residential to C and commercial neighborhood be approved. Based on the evidence and testimony provided to the commission, it meets the intent and purpose of the comprehensive plan. There have been major economic and social changes in the area, which were not anticipated in drafting of the comprehensive plan and warrants rezoning. Zoning changes will allow economic improvement to the community and the City of La Grange, as well as a justification statement as presented by the city.
Thank you, Mr. Haffling, Mr. Carter, does that suffice?
Yes.
All right, motion on the floor, can we have a second? Ms. Davis, thank you. We'll move into a roll call vote. Do we need to? Mr. Douglas, do you have? Can you turn that mic on, please?
The only thing I didn't hear from him was recommended approval to the legislative body. I just heard him say, make a motion to approve.
Can we incorporate that into the motion?
Yes.
Would that be appropriate for the second? Okay, council, does that work?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Move into roll call vote then.
Ms. Bonet.
Yes.
Ms. Davis. Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Elder.
Yes.
Mr. Finney.
Yes.
Mr. Haffling.
Yes.
Mr. Hampton.
Yes.
Mr. Klingefus.
Yes.
Ms. Nasser.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you have your approval. That will conclude this docket. Move on into, oh, excuse me. All right, here we go. All right, if everyone's ready, we'll move into the next item on the agenda. Ms. Nun, will you read the docket?
Okay, docket PG-1923, application has been filed by Elite Built Homes LLC for the approval of a zoning map amendment on approximately 34 acres. The property is located at 5500 Block of Schuler Lane Prospect. The change is from AG1 Agricultural District to R2 Residential District. And then we also have docket PG-19024, application's been filed by Elite Built Homes LLC for approval of preliminary subdivision plan for 58 lots on approximately 34 acres, to be known as Fisher Farm. The property is located at 5500 Block of Schuler Lane Prospect. The proposed zoning is R2 Residential District.
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard?
Thank you, please approach.
Thank you, my name is Glenn Price, I'm a lawyer with Frost Brown Todd in Louisville, 400 West Market Street, 40202. And I represent Old Pond Place, which is a property owner, actually, an owner of two lots in Hidden Creek Subdivision, which is immediately north of the Fisher Farm, which is the subject of today's two hearings. We have been in discussions with the folks at Elite Homes and at River Fuels, which holds a conservation easement on the Old Pond Place property, but we're not quite there. Just to give you a little background, George Freibert originally bought the Old Pond Place property years ago, and he bought it because it had this big old pond on it, and he built a log cabin on the property, and he just, he loved being out there, because it's basically a very pastoral place, and there's nothing around there. And his grave, he unfortunately died, but his grave is within a few feet of the common property line between the Fisher Farm and Old Pond Place. At this point, what we're looking for is some additional time to try to work out the differences among the parties, and we think that if we had, you know, less than a month, we can probably figure out whether we can resolve this or not. We do appreciate what Elite Homes has done, because it would provide some significant protections for Old Pond Place, both for the pond itself, which would be used for detention, and for the buffer strip that would be along the rear, or I guess the northern portion of the Fisher Farm development. But that's our request, is to postpone, Jim, is that the right term? Or to table it for a month.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Baxter, do you have something to add? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Barry Baxter, 117 West Main Street here in La Grange. I represent Norton Commons, who is also an adjoining landowner, at about 10:15 last night. Mr. Talbot kindly forwarded to me an amended traffic study, which I did not see this morning until about 8:20. I have not had an opportunity to review that, and based upon that new information, it would also be our request that these two matters be tabled.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Jim, council.
Well, I want to point out that, yeah, we did get that traffic analysis, and we did not pass it out this morning, so there was no confusion about what was going on, so it's not in your all's hands yet.
Understood, yes, sir.
One more, I'm Steve Porter, 2406 Tucker Station Road, Louisville, and I represent the Hidden Creek Subdivision Association. And we have no objection to this being tabled, we have been in negotiations, so we think we've got most of our problems solved, but there are still a couple, and I think this extra time will be very beneficial.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Representative of the applicant, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is John Talbot, I represent Elite Homes. We have no objection if this case is tabled. For the record, I do want to state, though, if this is considered by court later, or by any of the parties, as a postponement, we would want to state an objection in that regard.
Carter, any issues there?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else in this connection? All right.
I'm sure everybody understands what's going on.
That's where we're gonna throw it over to you.
Well, just for all the rest of the people that are in the audience, if there are any questions about what procedurally is being requested here, it looks as though people in opposition, as well as the applicant, are interested in tabling this item till, I guess, December meeting, to work out differences in their opinions. So if anybody else had any comments regarding that tabling, we won't be hearing the rest of the case today, if you all vote in that direction.
All right, so we have, please.
I'm Bill Holferkamp from Hidden Creek, 5003 Creek Circle. If this is tabled a month, does that mean this is going to, you folks are gonna meet on Christmas Eve Day?
No, the next meeting is December 17th, is that the right date?
Is that the date?
At 9 o'clock, yes.
Thank you very, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. For the members of the commission, you have a suggestion and a recommendation in front of you? It's the preference of the commission.
Mr. Commissioner, I would make a motion that we table PG-19023 and 024 at this time, since, I don't believe the commission has all the data that we need to make a substantial judgment on this, or recommendation, or approval. So based on the opposition, and I'm not sure of the clarification that the applicant made on tabling or not tabling, but that would be my recommendation.
Very well, so the motion to table is non-debatable, non-amendable, comes to an immediate vote?
We need a second first.
Oh, do need a second, thank you.
Second.
Ms. Bonet, Ms. Smith.
Table to December 17th.
Table to December 17th, is that acceptable to the motion maker and to the second? Okay, thank you. And we'll go through a roll call vote.
Mr. Douglas. Ms. Bonet.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Ms. Nasser.
Yes.
Mr. Klingefus.
Yes.
Mr. Hampton.
Yes.
Mr. Haffling.
Yes.
Mr. Finney.
Yes.
Mr. Elder.
Yes.
Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Dunne. All right, motion carries on a vote of 11 to nothing. The dockets are tabled until the December 17th hearing.
So obviously, we will have a December meeting, this items that have been tabled, as well as we've already received one, application as well.
All right, questions? All right, for the business? All right, we will stand adjourned then, thank you, everyone.